Call to order, the July 16th, 2019, Lake Mills City Council. And we would like to start with the roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
Okay, would you all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that takes us to item number four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of June 18th, 2019.
I move the council, city council minutes of June 18th, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or amendments changes? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Staying.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Taking us to item number five, correspondence. Anybody on the council like to share correspondence that you received? I did receive some correspondence regarding the fireworks and whether or not the city paid for part of that. And upon checking into that, nothing has changed. The city does not pay for any of the fireworks. That change took place way back in the eighties. And we have not, we do not give monetary donations to that. There was a print in the paper that led people to believe we did, and that was actually money that was donated to the fireworks by WPPI, which is a total separate, it's a business separate from the city, Lake Mills. And that was what happened. So we're going to hope that next year that gets corrected in the printout. Anybody else have any communication that they want to share? Well, moving on to item number six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk prior before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium before you leave. Hello?
Hi, my name is Mark Picard, 392 Brewster Drive. I'm a member of the Public Works Board. I'm speaking for myself, not for the Public Works Board or anybody else on it, just for myself. I wanted to speak about the yard waste resolution and the water rate proposal. The reason that yard waste resolution is here is because the Public Works Board last year had three or four meetings about the yard waste site. And when the current disposal site where all that stuff is hauled away is filled, things are going to get a lot more expensive. There's a lot of material that goes through the yard waste site currently, not all of it from, you know, it's not all small, city residents bringing small amounts of materials. Sometimes it's a large amount of materials from who knows where. Since that site was put there many years ago, it's just grown and grown and grown as far as the usage. It wasn't 10 years ago, 15 years ago, it wasn't like it is now. So that's why it's on the agenda here is to see if the council will support some improvement in controlling it, put it that way. For the water rate proposal, I have a chart here that I'd like to give Steve, if that's So I saw in the city council packet a list of a whole lot of water utilities, which was, I think, five pages long and pretty hard to decipher if that's all I was looking at. This is extracted from that PDF document, the same 166 utilities, which are utilities in Wisconsin between 1,000 and 4,000 customers. So Fort Atkinson and Watertown aren't included, they're too large. Cambridge isn't included because it's too small, but it's, I think, a fairly representative sample. It's what was provided in your packet. And as you can see, there's a huge variation in water rates that utilities charge. This is for 4,000 gallons per month usage, and it's the quarterly rate because that's the way the statistics were provided. So it's, you know, $84, and this is, Lake Mills is currently $84.14 per quarter, which is about $28 a month at 4,000 gallons. That includes the variable amount plus the fixed amount. And currently, Lake Mills is about at the 79th, 80th type percentile in terms of cost across these utilities. If you would look at a similar analysis for a more local geographic area, you would see a similar trend. It's not, you know, it'll be a little bit different by a few percent, but, you know, I've looked, I've looked at the nine counties, nine including Milwaukee County from Lake Michigan through Dane County, about the same, actually a little bit higher. Dane County, Jefferson County, together, about the same. And to me, this is, this is a piece of information. It's not, oh, my gosh. It's not good news. The water utility has some serious expenses that need to be addressed, and that's why this has changed over the last few years.
Mm-hmm.
But I want the city council and the city administration to be aware of just where we are and hope, you know, look hard at controlling costs, look at where there's ability to control costs. There's a whole lot of costs that can't be controlled, but I'm sure there's some that can be. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you took the time to put that together? That was, thank you for doing that. Okay. Any other, oop, you don't want to say that. So, all right, that is the end of our public comment. And so we'll move on to item seven, the city manager's report. And I'll turn that over to Steve.
At this meeting, I'm only going to do what's on the agenda, which is the monthly police department report. I provided you an article about branding, advertising, and marketing, and then the Embridge letter that was provided to me. We've been pretty busy out on the street, but things have really started to move. The dry weather's helped. So you'll notice that those types of activities as far as public construction are moving along in all three categories, American Way, Mulberry, and South Main Street. Some of the construction projects are getting a little more difficult as they get to the end, so we're spending a lot more time on those activities trying to make sure that coordination is taken care of. But everything looks like it's moving along pretty well. Are there any specific questions?
Can I ask, how, are we behind schedule or on any of them, or ahead of schedule, or just exactly where we are?
South Main Street is ahead of schedule by about, I would say, 30 days. So they were scheduled to end about mid-November. If they make it into September, it's going to be by a little bit. But we talked today about their construction schedule, and some of it has, a lot of the issues that we're dealing with have to be that the water and sewer and stormwater construction is so far ahead of the concrete that their debate is, do they go home and then remobilize and come back in, you know, two, three months? Or do we allow the concrete to shift schedule in a couple ways? And those create difficulty with road closures and openings. So if we shut off Woodland Beach Road and we force everybody to use East Lake Park Place and all of it goes down through Pinnacle, which would be the actual Phase 4-1, and then we stopped and we went back and we closed East Lake Park Place again, and then we forced them to use Woodland, there's some worry about some confusion there and some construction practices, but, you know, we got a bunch of engineers on it, they'll figure it out pretty soon and be able to figure out what's going on. Mulberry Street was four days behind, which isn't bad. The dry weather and the additional crew and the additional workday have got them going pretty good. There are a lot of technical issues, you know, like the historic preservation items that are problematic for us, some of the haul road issues. Sometimes you just find stuff you didn't know happened. So like, the sanitary sewer in front of the bank at Lake Mills wasn't where it was supposed to be. So those are just some things that happen. Some sewers are not as deep as they were supposed to be, and that's created problems all over the place, so.
Are they, are they getting ready to lay concrete on the north end there?
Yes, they're probably going to start sidewalks this week.
On the east side, right?
On the east side. And then they'll, it looks like they'll do, as soon as they get those sidewalks to a point where you can walk the whole east side, they'll go and shift to the sidewalks on the west side.
Right.
And they'll pour curb and gutter, and then they'll do asphalt pavement, at least the first layer, and then they might come back and do driveways. It just depends on the schedule right now. With the weather as dry as it is, the concrete guys are always hard to get a hold of. So, but they're, they're getting ready on the north end to start pouring concrete, and definitely sidewalks, probably curb and gutter, not far behind. But that'll just run down to Fargo. And then the south half will, they'll actually start from the other end and head north.
And CP is doing good, on schedule?
Yes, CP's doing fine. They've got the sidewalks and the bike trail all done. They have the curb and gutters all poured. They started working on the sanitary sewer service to Dog and Shrub Distillery. And they've also started the water and sewer in the Brookstone subdivision. I anticipate that, probably not next week, but the week after, they're actually start laying asphalt out there. They did a lot of grading and seeding here recently. So it should be going pretty well.
One question, is Mulberry going to be concrete or asphalt?
Asphalt.
Same CP too?
CP too. Those are, those are city streets. Our standard is concrete, curb and gutter with a 24-inch curb pan, and then asphalt three and a half inches. On Mulberry, it'll be four. Probably all of CP, it'll be four. And then, I guess, can't remember, it might be three and a half on American Way, but on the west end, it's four.
But South Main will be what, concrete?
Yep, it'll be concrete. State Highway, they're for concrete.
Is the same concrete, oh, is the company that's used on Mulberry for the curb and gutter the same one that's used on South Main for concrete?
No, in fact-
I couldn't remember.
All totally different contractors.
All right, okay.
Concrete on Main Street is Laland, Schultz on Mulberry, and Renhock on American Way, CP. And then the city uses Swiger. So you'll see concrete companies all over the place, because our maintenance crews are up fixing sidewalks and curbs for that type of stuff. And Wolf is doing our asphalt patches. Wolf is a subcontractor for South Main. Payne and Dolan is for Mulberry, and Tri-County, I think, is for American Way and CP.
Sounds a little juggling there. Make sure you get the right group and you're talking about stuff.
I don't have to do much with it. The engineers submit all the documents, and I just have to make sure that I know where to put the money.
And this hot weather is actually good for the road construction, right?
Yes.
Maybe not-
Very good. Lot of dust.
Not for the employees, but-
A lot of dust, but, yeah.
Well, let's hope things keep going. Anything else for the city manager, questions or comments? And, let's see. That moves us on to item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Parks Board, May 15th, 2019 minutes. Planning Commission, May 28th, 2019. Public Works Board, May 14th of 2019. And the Public Works Board of June 11th, 2019. Those minutes will be accepted and placed on file. Taking us to item nine, council business. I'm going to turn item A over to Mr. Wilkie for his city manager appointment.
Tonight, I'm appointing Dennis Griffey to the Police and Fire Commission to replace Beverly Farnsworth.
And Beverly Farnsworth, who has died recently, was on that board for quite a long time, right?
Very long time.
So, just want to recognize her contribution over the years on the Police and Fire Commission. Sorry we lost her, so.
When people asked how long they were going to be on the Police and Fire Commission, I said, "Well, probably until you take yourself off or something else happens."
Did she ask you that?
No, someone-
Somebody did.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, and we don't have to approve your appointment. That's just an appointment. Item B, miscellaneous licenses. Misty, would you read those names, please?
Sure, these are all tavern operator licenses for Jennifer Gaffney, Cameron Rail, Lisa Radell, Sue Trump, Cheyenne Anderson, Emma Fisher, Mary Deans, Ismail Lemani, Emily Teagues, Jackie Smith, Ian Billingsley, Helen Dray, Catherine Miller, Chloe Burbach, Susan Gonzalez, Eleni Eglesier, Alexandra Schmidt, Patricia Hesse, Megan Ramsey, Kristy Womack, Sophia Collins, Carol Hazard, Charny Mann, Kelly Harrington, Trevor Woody, Cesar Burias, Jessica Danert, Ashley Gutchak, Lindsay Ladwig, Dana Bergman, Samuel Fuhr, Mary Schaefer.
Okay. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve these tavern operator licenses?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Discussion and decision on the capital improvement projects. Let's get on that item here on my computer. So, would you, let's go to the motion and read the title, please?
City Council Motion 19-7-2-1, Approval of 2020/2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay. Let's do a motion and a second, and then we'll discuss it further.
I move motion 19-7-2-1.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, thank you. All right. We can now take a look at this motion and the supporting documents that we have received. You want to speak to this, Steve?
Well, what we tried to do is project out a five-year capital project, most of it based on streets, water, and sewer. So we have Reed Street in there as being in the next year's budget. Reed Street isn't even really a full street length, a block, but it is a portion of a sanitary sewer main that is in pretty poor condition. We're still highly debating this project, and so when you see the actual capital budget coming down in September, there may be some issues with this one because the sewer main has a substantial sag in it. And if we do it, the pavement is bad from curb to curb. But the water main is a 1913 water main-
Ooh.
-and it runs with the sanitary sewer. So by DNR code requirements or DNR standards, we'd have to move the water main out of the So that may require some water costs. So we're just trying to determine whether we can afford those or not, and if it's a critical situation or not for us. And we're still debating that and trying to study that. The other projects are West Lake Street and 21. That's been in for the last two years, and that project seems to be a pretty logical project. The street's in pretty poor condition, the water and sewer are very old, and it has several lead service laterals that need to be replaced. We moved Oak Street in there. Oak Street from Main to Mulberry has deteriorated, has some, and we may do it all the way to Lake Street, so those two blocks. The water and sewer are in need of replacement. There are several lead service laterals in there. So that one got moved up based on the pavement rating and the lead service laterals. It's also a smaller project, so it keeps the cost down, makes the DNR happy because we get our, we get some more lead service lateral replacements taken care of because we're required to replace a certain number every year. Right now, we're probably, we probably have done 50. And so we have some stored up for a couple of years, but depending on their new determination, we might be in the 20 to 26 category for replacements per year that might take us down pretty fast. So West Lake and Oak Street are good projects. We did have Fremont in there for a while, which did have a lot of lead lateral services, but we've replaced all those, or the vast majority of them. I think we have two left, but the vast majority have been replaced. And as we've replaced them, we've replaced so much asphalt that the street's in a lot better condition than it previously was. So that street kind of dropped in the project rating. Milton Street has moved up. College Street has stayed there. College Street has some, some other issues other than just lead service laterals. They've got some stormwater drainage down at the end. And I don't know if you remember, but we did a pretty extensive, two pretty extensive stormwater studies. One was in the northwest, which incorporates all the areas from Lake Street North to Marguerite and over to Ferry. A lot of that area drains to the lake, and so we were trying to figure out how to tie it all together and run it through a special storm treatment system similar to what we had looked at on the Mill Pond. And then the other one we did was that whole area in Grant, Prospect, Moss, and then to the Mulberry area, because that all, well, it didn't drain anywhere, it sat on the streets. So now we're trying to figure out how to drain it somewhere. And that was a project that we did, and that's, you know, why there is a 10-foot stormwater manhole in the center of Mulberry Street now out at Grant, so that we can drain a lot of those areas that were, basically held the water on the street, and that's why the pavement's been so difficult to maintain.
What's being done on Prospect Street? Is that water sewer, or is that-
That's gas.
That's gas, okay.
Yeah. Kind of a sneaky project. They knew what was going on, and they were actually storing their materials over by Mulberry so that people thought that that was part of the Mulberry project and not theirs, and they could get away with storing it without maintaining it properly.
Never a dull moment.
There's a list here on one, oh, one dumb snow material hauler. What, is that a dump truck or what?
It's more of a flatbed with sides on it.
Oh.
As you know, we load a lot of snow. And so we use a flatbed with racks on it, and then in the wintertime, we put solid plywood on it, and then we blow it into that and haul snow. In the summertime, we use that to haul brush, pick up and haul brush. So it has multiple options. We use it, and then we can use it for a lot of other items throughout the course of the year. But those are the two main things that, that it's designed to handle is brush and We do use, most of our dump trucks are one tons, and they are rigged with salt spreaders and snowplows, so you can't use those to haul snow in the wintertime, so you have to have alternate options. So we use the two-ton dump trucks that we have, and then these flatbed racks that we have. And that's how we move our snow into the, from the areas where we blow it to where we store it.
So you're looking at my new one list?
Yes, yep. Yeah, there, there's equipment listed there. I got the street department done, I got the parks department done, I haven't got the utilities done yet, but I'm, I'm working on that. But that's, that's not really a part of the capital improvement plan, per se. What we're looking at is the main construction projects. But it does give you an idea of what we have scheduled out over the next several years that'll show up in the budget that you get in September. that you get in September.
So Steve and I, when I look at this, when I look at the capital plan projects by department, and then after reading your memo, I just want to make sure I understood this right. So if I look at West Lake Street, and I see it's a twenty-one project, the forty-four thousand in twenty twenty is just maintenance and upkeep of that road for that year?
No, that is design.
Design?
That's engineering and planning that goes into the design, and the actual construction. And generally, we do all our, we try and have the preliminary design work, most of the design work done by January first, so that we have an idea of, because we want to get that bid out right away for that construction here. So generally, we try and have the bid documents out first week, second week in January, so that we're getting bids back in in early February. Wouldn't mind actually moving it up because the, the earlier in the year that you get your bids in the paper, the better prices are because they're still working through, people are still aggressively bidding projects. Once they start getting a bunch of projects and you're later in the year, people are, you're getting a smaller group of people that bid. Sometimes they're a little aggressive. There's a lot of work like there's been in the last couple of years. Nobody needs the work. So you want to, you want to get out there early January, early February. So the first in twenty, we're doing basically design and getting the construction documents together and out to bid. And we look at having that project constructed sometime during that year. Generally, we like to do it from, from June first to mid-September. We've done them earlier, we've done them later, but we try and stay in that form. So everything that we kind of set up, we schedule it out like that. We'll have, particularly if we have any special assessments that are involved, because special assessments take a lot more paperwork, and we have to have things before the Public Works Board in October. So we have to have some idea of what the special assessments are. In this case, I don't see any special assessments for a while, but it's nice to keep it on that schedule, and the bid projects work out great for us then. We start getting too far into the year, and then we have problems. Some of the maintenance items, like if we get, if we have a big contract, and then we put out our maintenance contract in, in March or April, the guys who have the big contracts already in the city are more likely to bid on that because then they're already here, they're more willing to do it, and then we generally get a pretty decent price. But, you know, if you don't have a big contract, then the maintenance, you want to get it up earlier, too. So that's just a, a planning and scheduling deal for us.
One last, one last question. I know that now that the, the state does have a signed budget, and I know there was some line item vetoes in there specifically around local, money for local roads and things like that. Can you give us a little insight into how that will either benefit us or cause us issues in this coming year?
There was quite a bit of additional money put aside for local government. The original definition of local government in the budget was counties and towns. And the way the line item did it, cut cities in. So we got more money, cities and villages. And so it, it helped our construction budgets.
So it was something we weren't going to get anyway, but it, it allowed us to get cut into it even if that number is a smaller number than what was originally projected overall?
Yes. There was, there were very large amounts going to the counties and the towns.
Yeah.
And they, they lost a little, but we gained.
We gained, okay.
So it didn't turn out too bad for us. I would say.
It'll help us offset some of these, hopefully.
Yeah, there were, as far as road aids and even shared revenues, we did okay in this, in this budget. There were, there were other areas where we took beatings, but you always win in some and lose some in a budget.
Sure. Thank you.
I'm just happy to see that we're going to be finally doing West Lake Street. For years, I've had the people, you know, and I remember just a year ago or so, when I told them, I said, well, we aren't going to do it before we do Highway eighty-nine because there's going to be traffic on it, and, and we want to get through that, and then we'll fix Lake Street. So I wanted to say thank you to the people on West Lake for their tolerance and patience, because the road is having problems and.
Well, that brings up a question. With West Lake, that goes all the way around, right?
No, it does not.
That's the whole piece, or is it just right there?
It ends at the end there, and then that's North Shore.
Okay.
Or Lake Shore. Lake Shore.
Lake Shore.
So, yeah, that's, you know, that's out of ways.
Okay.
Lake is in. As you know, we historically budgeted, financed all these capital projects. So the scheduling of them has been done to, on the projection that I provided you, to start bringing the, the overall debt back down. So we've shortened up our timelines. We've done several things in order to help our debt situation, and particularly in water and sewer, which, you know, this time it downgraded us some, and hopefully we can upgrade that again the next time through. But as Mark has noted, we have a lot of water and sewer projects that need to be taken care of. And so we, we are trying to work that schedule very carefully. It ties into water loss. We're hoping the meters would be the situation where we would find out that a bunch of our old meters weren't reading appropriately. It's helped a little. Some of the water main projects we've done have helped some, but we're still, we're out of the forties, and we're down into the high twenties as a percentage of loss. But we need to get down to fifteen, or even lower if we can. And I think between the meters and the water main replacements, we'll start to get there.
I can tell you, as a customer, I am pleased with having the new meters there because I no longer see the little postcards stuck in my door, and then I have to go read the, dig it out and read the thing. So it's kind of nice to have those new meters in there.
They'll have to come through, state law requires that we have to inspect it every so often. So they'll, they'll come through and, and stick a card in there to ask you to let them in every so often. But yeah, it's nice to be able to have it read that way. At the, we've gotten to the point where one meter reader isn't enough to read all the meters in the city, and so having the system is really going to help that.
I was watching the Public Works Board video, and you were talking about some of the street planning. What was it, Milton you were talking about, twenty thirty?
Actually, Milton is, is a lot earlier than twenty thirty. It's still in the five-year plan, if I remember correctly. The ones that are in like twenty thirty are, Milton is in twenty four, East Prospect is in twenty five. So if you look at the, there's another document there that, that Dwayne has provided. And there's green in. So he's looking at Jefferson CP in twenty thirty.
Hmm.
And a portion of East Lake Street in twenty twenty-nine, Lake Shore Drive in twenty-eight, which is the area that you mentioned, where West Lake Street ends and it turns and goes north. Fremont in twenty-seven, Franklin and Scott in twenty-six. So you see how far we're out. And then he, he provides a, I think, did that get in here? Yeah, there's the one that's in an Excel spreadsheet form, and it has yellow and green. It has the street ratings, and it shows even right now, Jefferson is in thirty, and you still have like, what, twenty streets that are threes or below? So it's going to be, it's going to be hard catching up.
But at least we're making an effort. Whereas twenty, thirty years ago, we just ignored the water program entirely. I mean, even when we did North Main Street, we did not replace the water.
No, you did not.
We did not replace this. Did we replace the sewer?
No.
Yeah, I was on that council, and because of the money, we chose not to do it because of the cost. We didn't have the money at that time, but, you know, that means, those are all going to be sources of problems coming down the road because, you know.
A large portion of that water main was.
Yep.
A large portion of that water main was constructed in nineteen ten. And the sanitary sewer is constructed in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So you have water main and sewer mains that are between a hundred and some, and about eighty years old on a pavement that's supposed to last fifty years or more. So I'm anticipating that, while we're already working on plans on how to replace it without taking the concrete out, I think we're going to bore in a plastic line along one side and then shift everything over by boring under the street.
Something new.
Yeah, so.
Just remove.
And then we'll just abandon the old main in place, and sanitary sewer, I think, we'll just line. And we'll work through that. But those, most of our streets aren't like that, and so we're trying to plan around, you know, our street replacement. Most of our streets are asphalt, so, and then we can come back in and look at it. So like, East Lake Street, some of that replacement there, we're worried about the size of the sanitary sewer in the future. So we're just going to mill an overlay and replace some curb, and then reevaluate it as, as there's some development on the south and north sides.
Oh, and everything costs money. There isn't a free ride. So. Any other questions about this motion? The Public Works Board did approve it. And so, well, are we ready to vote on it? Would you call the roll for the motion? That's on the table.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so we are done with that one. Our agenda here. Okay, that moves us to item D. Discussion and decision on Public Works Board Yard Waste Resolution. Would you read that motion, please?
There's actually not a prepared motion for this one.
This is, the motion that's there is the one that was provided by the Public Works Board.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Oh, okay. So the one I'm looking at is E.
We did not provide a motion on this because basically what we were hoping for was is that we would just have some level of conversation on the issue, and then that someone would volunteer to sponsor an ordinance, and then we could kind of work through that with the sponsor and then bring it back and, and have a further conversation on where we would like to head.
How far have we got on talking about a new site?
We provided a lot of ideas, very conceptually. We did research on how much we're hauling. And as Mark has noted, every year from two thousand on, the amount of yard waste we're hauling is growing. I think this year, we did a much better job of data collection, thanks to Dwayne. But that being said, it's still, this year, we're already higher than last year, which was the highest year that we had.
So the.
And the, and the conversation that was driving our, looking at the new site was is that we were going to fill in the site that we're hauling to now, and we would need to have some type of decision on a new site and how we would handle it. Mark's conversation has been, if you do a better job of enforcing who's hauling in, it gives you a longer time horizon to make the shift. Some of the debates about, and obviously that's a very accurate statement, the, some of the debates of standard around moving it to a new site, putting a fence around it, putting cameras on it, having access control, that would allow us, hopefully, to have more control over it. If we're going to leave it at the existing site, then it's, how do we control the access at the existing site? And what kind of arguments are we willing to make? You know, I'm hauling, I'm a contractor, but I'm hauling waste from a person who lives in the city.
Yeah. So things that I think of when we're looking at the current site, you know, obviously you talked about fencing, which can get expensive, and people back into, and all those different things like that. The next thing is putting cameras in there, as long as we have the high enough quality you can see at night, things like that, will help. But who's going to do the checking? Who's going to do the enforcement afterwards? And then what, what type of legalities do you, do you bring up after that? You know, someone say, well, somebody borrowed my truck. I didn't know they did that. So can you clearly see the person? How do you take, is it going to cause more court cases, things like that?
There are a lot of cities that, that do some level of this. So I, I don't know that that's, we're going to have some of that. Read a great article yesterday about free riders, and how their corruption of the system hurts everybody. That being said, that doesn't mean that we're going to give up on it because cooperation, and the better the cooperation, the better that it results for everybody that's involved. So from, from this standpoint, what we want to look at is, let's get an ordinance, if you, if you guys want to look at it, let's start an ordinance, and let's put together some ideas, and we'll work that out. I think, you know, when we originally started with the composting site, Vicki's statement was, well, let's construct it to do this, but make it so that it moves to the next one. So let's say we got a site, and we laid out a pad, and we put a fence around it. Let's make sure that it's set up so that if we need to, we can grow into the next sites, if we're composting or whatever we're doing. But those are the types of things we were talking about then. And I think that's still the idea that we would like to move forward with. It's whether we jump from the existing site to that site now, or we try and rope in what we have at the existing site. And how much, and so we're going to have to weigh and balance how much money we're going to expend at the existing site versus how much we're going to spend at the other site. All of it with the goal of making, reducing the amount of yard waste that we have to haul to our existing site to keep us from having to go to some composting. Now, the county is doing a shared services study with all the municipalities, and yard waste is one of the items on the deck. And we have, the Public Policy Institute in Milwaukee is doing the study, and they would probably look at it, and they're going to look at it and say, hey, if this, there may be some economic efficiencies here. If they are, the county may step in and start providing these types of services countywide with the cooperation of the municipalities. So those are some of the issues that are out there. I wanted you to know that. But from the standpoint of if someone sponsors an ordinance, Dan and Paul and I can kind of start working on putting together something that, that at least you have evaluated and given us your ideas of, of what you think will and won't work and where you want to head.
Yeah. I have no problem sponsoring anything around this. So if you want to add my name to. to that, that's fine and we can start talking about it. We have to do something, but there is always downsides to doing something. So we just have to make sure we're looking at all angles because what happens to that, what happens to that waste that now people can't get in there and they're used to getting in there from somewhere else. They just dump it and run, you know. There's always things.
That's what I was gonna say too, that, you know, it's.
Cause then that's a cleanup issue, but it.
If, if you have the cameras, hopefully you can capture that.
Yeah, hopefully.
Some of it is, is more along the lines of our residents are used to being able to dump anytime they want.
Right.
So if we put a fence around it and set it up so that you can only get in at certain times, there's gonna be some level of frustration there. So from that standpoint, it's a, how do we service the residents while controlling the free riders that are hopping in on us? And that's what you're trying to balance here because every time you have a gain, you have a loss. And so who's winning and who's losing?
Yeah.
So if, if we're controlling it and we're saying, well, it's worthwhile not having it open on a Sunday, but we know a lot of people hauling a Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay, that's something that you may have to live with.
Close on a Monday and not on Sunday.
Yeah, so it's, it's all on, those are things you're gonna have to work out. And we'll look at them and weigh them out, but I'm just using that as a concept that, hey, there are winners and there are losers in almost everything we do and, but at some point we have to decide what's the most beneficial to all of us and move on.
Win the risk and reward.
Right.
We can do it. I'm on board with you.
And also, you know, the fact that it is a city dump site, not an area dump site. We get a lot of people that aren't in the city that are bringing in there and many of them know they're not supposed to. They kind of go, oh, but I don't know where else to put it.
Right.
Have we done anything with the township to see if they could get their own place?
Well, at one point in time, we were looking at cooperating with them to have, have them be able to buy into ours.
Yep.
I don't know, you know, if we go countywide, I don't know, that won't, probably won't be an issue, but if we don't, let's say, there would be some benefit to having them cooperate with us on it. I'm sure that, that we're gonna have a lot of their people who are gonna wanna be able to buy a, some type of pass to get in. I think they do have their own yard waste site though. At least the town of Lake Mills does. I don't think Astalon does.
For everybody's information, where were we talking about putting the new site?
There's been no firm discussion on that. We've looked at a couple of different sites. We've talked about some areas in the industrial park. We've looked at some sites on the south side. But that's, it's all been pretty much conjecture. What we've done is developed a site plan. We have to go out and figure out how it's gonna fit on some acreages. There is some, you know, potential for swaps and other types of land trades that we could do too that I think would, people might be interested in.
So you're looking for a motion?
No, just looking for someone to say they'll sponsor.
Oh, okay, that was enough?
I would be willing to sponsor too.
I already did.
Vicki also mentioned prior that she would, Vicki also mentioned prior that she might be able to sponsor.
Well, we have three people to sponsor.
We can't have three. We can have two.
We have two.
Be my guest.
Yes.
All right, it's us, Wonder Twin Powers.
Would you like your name associated with it?
Yeah, it's fine. I was going to volunteer anyway if Mike hadn't stepped up, but if he's willing to co-sponsor, I will do that with him.
That sounds good. Okay, and then this would move to staff?
Yes, we'd work, Dan and Vicki would work together on the preliminary.
Or work for Dan. Job security, Dan.
Paul and I would work on the conceptual nature of the, the application.
Mark, can I ask you, can I ask Mark a question? Picard?
Do we need to?
Does anyone?
Yeah, we should suspend the rules, I think.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend?
Forget it. I don't wanna go through that.
Well, it's not that big a deal. I, I, I mean, he came tonight. Let's let him talk.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second, call the rule.
Mishmet?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Okay, now, go ahead and ask your question.
How does, my question is, does this fit in with what you guys were talking on the Public Works Board?
Well, Vicki's, of course, on the Public Works Board as well. I'd say in general, yes. My, 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 my thoughts on it have always been, we've talked about this other site for, you know, since last year. When is that gonna happen? And the more we, the longer we can use the current site, the more cost effective, the better for the citizens in terms of a cost standpoint to use the, the current site and the current disposal site. So why not try to extend that as much as we can? You know, whether it's, whether it's using the current drop-off site or a more controlled drop-off site or, you know, largest, larger purchase piece of land, my thought personally is the sooner the better.
Well, and if we're gonna spend money to do what we need to do at the current site and then move it, doesn't seem like the best use of money.
Yeah, it just all depends on what we do and how much we need to spend at it. If we're just looking at, trying to secure it a little bit to get some insight into who's dropping and who isn't and maybe chase some folks off, that could be a, a low-cost solution that could actually pay us big dividends in a, in a small timeframe. And then things like that, cameras, things like that, they can be moved to the new site, especially if we get high enough quality stuff. So you don't lose the, the capital outlay that you've had. You just have to put a little bit more OpEx into it to rewire them.
My sense is we don't have a real database, data-driven idea of what's, who's dropping it off, who's, who's using it and so on and so forth.
We have a good idea of how much we're getting and how much labor and costs and equipment we have tied up in it. The who's bringing it is not something that we've been able to collect.
Yeah, having cameras at least, it'll give you some metrics behind it. You can get some numbers to start with. And then if you don't notice, know the people that are putting in there, maybe take some time to figure out who they are and, I don't know.
And maybe, you know, Dan and I were discussing running license plates off of camera.
Yeah, and you can do that too.
Does that meet state law requirements?
Yeah, I don't know. Privacy rules. Are there privacy rules on your license plate? I don't know.
Well, that's getting into surveillance-type activities. Big Brother is watching.
Yeah, well, we have to figure out how to enforce it, but the, so, but we wanna make sure we're not breaking the law either.
Right.
So we, we, we'll have to go through and check all those things out and make sure we know what we're doing.
Yep.
But there are cameras everywhere nowadays.
Yep.
Maybe we can have a permit system where when you're going to dump, you have to show your permit to the camera and then go ahead and dump. At least then there's some way of being able to control who's there. And if they don't have a permit, well, maybe the violation isn't so much the dumping as it's not presenting a permit. And that's what you're being cited for. Sort of like what we do with our boat launch. Your violation there isn't the launching part, it's not displaying your, your receipt where you're supposed to and that's how you get your ticket.
Pick your, pick your permit, permit up when you pay your taxes.
Just a thought.
It's not a bad thought.
Good thought. But we can talk about that.
Okay, so we've done what we need to do. So we can move on to the item E, discussion decision on water rate proposal. Would you read the motion, please?
City Council Motion nineteen-seven-two-two, authorizing the city manager to apply to the Public Service Commission for Water Rate Adjustment.
This is a nice, short motion. Is there someone that would like to make this motion?
I move a draft motion nineteen-seven-two-two.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay, now I have a motion and a second. The Public Works Board has approved this idea. Do you wanna comment on this, Steve, or not?
It's basically, the way it works now is the public, once we expend the money, the Public Service Commission gives us permission to apply for a rate to support that. So last year we applied and related to the expenses we'd incurred last year, we got a, we asked for a fourteen percent increase and we got an eighteen. They gave us an eighteen. This year, we're going through and looking at it and, you know, with South Main Street and Mulberry Street being two huge projects that we assumed a lot of debt on, they came back with an, we are proposing an eight point two and, and I'm assuming that based on what they did last year, that this eight point two will be consistent with what they want. So I believe that we are in good shape on this proposal. A lot of detail are, you probably remember me mentioning, last year they started asking a lot more questions about data. And Duane and other people in the city, Kristen and Teresa and a lot of people at WPPI have been working very hard, along with Justin, the engineer from Bill's Camper from Strand, have done a lot of work on cleaning our data. We are getting a lot better information that we can put together that's meeting the requirements of the Public Service Commission. So I, I believe that we have a very good, clean report here. It isn't perfect. They're all off by some percent, the highest being like two point one percent off. But considering last year when we started, we were like thirty percent off, it's not too bad.
Can I ask what you mean by off?
What was billed and sometimes what was billed and what was received doesn't match. And there's some time sequencing things in there. There's some applications pending for waiver of costs, you know, like I had a leak or something along that line. There, sometimes the data just isn't real good. We had, last year we had, the meters never matched. We'd go from report to report to report and the number of meters was never the same. This year, all our meter reports were within twenty, which is very good.
We're talking about with the installation of the new, new meters and so on?
Well, what we're talking about is a total and number of meters that are supposedly out there being read. And we have, you know, we have hot water heater meters, we have irrigation meters, we have sewer-only meters, we have water sewer meters, water-only meters. And so as you try and follow them through the system, sometimes it gets confusing as to which category they fall into based on how they're structured. So, you know, one report might have it in this category and another report might have it in that category. So you're trying to pull them together and make them as consistent as possible. Public Service Commission looks at it and says, if you're within three percent, we're happy. So all of ours are, are under that three percent and most of them are significantly under that. You know, we're within a half percent on most of our reports this year, which is very good. But across the board, most, when we tell other cities that, you know, we're, we're concerned about these reports and how much they're off that they don't match, they're like, you're never gonna match your reports. So it's, it bothers me a little bit. I, you know, like financial reports, if you're off nine hundred dollars a month for twelve months, how much is that? Is that a floating, is that an accumulating or is that just a floating? So by that, I mean if it's accumulating nine hundred dollars a month, ends up being almost twelve thousand dollars. If it's floating, then it starts out at nine hundred dollars and it remains nine hundred dollars. So those are, those are the types of questions I wanna know. And sometimes they just, they can't answer that for me. And it, that bothers me. From an internal control perspective, you know, an accounting and budgeting guy, I'm scratching my head going, who's getting that money or where is it in the system or who didn't record it or who did record it? And those are questions that we continue to follow, but the people that work in this profession on a regular basis don't carry the same amount of concern as I do. The auditors don't.
New meters should help you fix some of that as long as they're labeled and checked correct as the correct thing.
That's correct. As we change out the meters, we'll get a better handle on it. Some of them are, you know, like the ones at the trailer park, and we have two meters, but we bill everybody.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna have to go through and figure out how this all works and tie our systems into a more complete and accurate system. It just takes time.
Is our income, with the, the rate that's been approved, will that meet our expenses?
Well, that's why we did it the way we did it. That being said, it hasn't consistently worked that way, so. The last two rates we've done, one got us within break even, one actually got us to the point where we were actually catching up. And this one hopefully will be able to help us maintain, cause you, you have to realize we added a lot of new debt in the utilities and water and sewer this year. So water being particularly stressed, hopefully we'll be able to keep up with all that new debt. But there, you know, there are changes in industry, changes, you know, when I started in this profession, the average home used about a hundred and forty gallons of water a day. That's down to about eighty-four, eighty-five. All the water conservation practices out there, all the new plumbing fittings and all that has changed that. Businesses do not use water like they used to. They recycle and they reuse and it's just not the same world that it used to be. And, and so water was like any other business. They were a volume-related business. They depended on increased volume. And so as their expenses expanded, particularly, you know, now you're doing a seventy-five thousand dollar study on. And so as their expenses expanded, and particularly, you know, now you're doing a $75,000 study on corrosion, and you're doing a $55,000 radium adjustment, and you're replacing all these leaky water mazes, and you're painting the water tower, and you're, all of a sudden, you start to add this up. There's a lot, a lot of money going out. $400,000 worth of meters. And so you, you're trying to figure out, the cost is escalating at a rate that you're not capable of financing anymore. Not because the rates aren't going up, but because the usage is going down. To a certain extent, the usage going down is, in my opinion, is pretty good, because when you run out of water, there's not a lot of options. And so it's a condition of, we get what we want, but we can't afford it.
The irony of that. People start saving water, and now, now it's costing us more money.
We need to, yeah, we need to vote.
So I guess we're ready to, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 1938, would you read that, please?
Resolution 19-38, Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings, Sign Art Studio for Angie Olson, Olson Eye Care, 117 Westlake Street.
There it is. Okay. That's good timing. All righty. Who wants to speak to this?
Again, Olson Eye Care is on Westlake Street. They're in a building in the downtown area. They wanted to put in a sign that is, requires a conditional use. It also requires a privilege in the street, so you'll note that it says that you're doing both. And it went before the public, or the planning commission, and it was approved. It's, we've approved several of these in the past, consistent. And so it's, it's just more of a making sure that we dot all the i's and cross all the t's as far as making sure that they meet the right height, that they, we don't get an unusually sign that is unappropriately designed for the site.
This is...
Generally, we don't look at what the content is, but is it high enough? You got to be 10 feet off the pavement, and you got to have a design that holds it onto the wall, and there are certain features that have to meet the, that have to be related to the business. You just can't hang something out there.
Is this electrifying?
I do not believe it is.
No, they said it wasn't.
Well, I've met with the planning commission's approval.
Yep, went through.
So I would say, oh, we need a motion.
Need a motion. So move.
Second.
And a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion further? There is a picture of it, not a picture of it, but a picture of where it's going to be. I think the planning commission has done their job. Why, we don't need to do more. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the planning. Resolution 1939.
Resolution 19-39, authorizing city manager to execute altered and relocated bicycle trail easement agreement pertaining to parcel 246-0713-1341-002.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 1939.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We talked about this one already.
Could we go back over, what's the purpose of it?
Bike trail. That's along American Way. So previously, it was in the north end of parcels there, and we moved it directly adjacent to American Way on the south end of those parcels.
So it's kind of housekeeping?
Oh, you approved the relocation idea previously. This is the actual meat of the easement itself. There are some terms that were changed compared to the previous easement on the north side, rather than just the location. There's a new owner of the property, et cetera. So I don't see substantive changes that you should be alarmed about or anything like that in the negotiations for the easement itself. The owner of the property was pretty easy to work with, and I think we've come to terms that are reasonable here and accomplished the goal that's before you.
So I think unless anybody else has concerns, call the roll on this one.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Resolution 1940.
Resolution 19-40, Reduction of Financial Guarantee, North Shore Estates LLC.
Do I have a motion to approve this motion, this resolution?
So move.
Second?
Second.
So North Shore Development is on the north side of the lake. It's actually in township. We have extraterritorial review over the zoning process. There are city infrastructure implements that are involved in the development, specifically sewer and water, or not water, excuse me, specifically sewer and electric. The reduction that's requested is for completed sewer work. The letter that's kind of most pertinent is what Brandon Herbert provided from Strand recommending, the recommendation of reducing the amount of the financial guarantee.
This is not Mangan.
No.
Where is it located?
On the north side of the lake, on B, heading out of town, on the north side of B.
Oh, that new section up there, yeah.
The condo development. Schwagart is the developer.
Is this the parcel that's somewhat landlocked?
There's an entry from Highway B.
It's all between Highway B and the interstate.
Yes.
We debated it a lot because it had a pretty narrow roadway, and the cul-de-sac on the end of it probably didn't provide for the fire truck turnaround, so they provided us some additional turnaround areas.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Looked like they had a pretty good pad up in one area there for turnaround, yeah. So I see the letter from Strand and from North Shore Development. So staff is okay? You don't see any issues whatsoever? It's not going to cause us any...
Now, we've retained enough of the letter of credit to complete what's still necessary with regard to sewer roadwork. And electric, we didn't touch the financial guarantee at all, because that work's just not completed at this point.
Yeah. So we use Strand to make sure that it's up to our city standards before we say...
Correct. Brandon Herbert wouldn't provide this letter or this recommendation if it didn't meet, if there was an observation and the specs of the development weren't honored in the process of development.
Yeah.
We actually require that Strand be on-site during construction, and they do all the, the observation on-site. So, yeah, they have all the details of what was constructed and what wasn't, and they know that it meets the standards.
Yeah, and that was part, I was, just wanted to make sure that that's how we did it. We used Strand and not something else. Nobody, nobody, yeah, third party.
Absolutely. This isn't the city making their judgment in this situation. It's our contractor.
Okay, perfect.
We, we used to allow the developer to use their own engineer, and then we would come in and do inspections, and we, we just kept finding that there were so many flaws that it was cheaper just to have Strand on-site than it was to do the battle back and forth and put it in, take it out, put it in, take it out.
Makes sense. I always say, if you inspect, you inspect. So make sure we do it right the first time.
Did they provide the lien waivers?
We haven't seen lien waivers. No, we have not. But being the concrete guy, Schwagart did all of the roadwork, and sewer was provided by Spiegelhoff SNS. And no, we don't have lien waivers submitted yet. That's a good idea, though. We should definitely gather lien waivers. In the development agreement, they are required.
Yeah, because I believe that lien waivers have to be produced before you can reduce the letter of credit.
Yep.
Do we need to amend the motion to include that?
No, I think if, if Dan monitors it, it'll be fine.
Not a problem.
Okay. So, any other discussion or questions?
Don't do it.
We ordered a sneeze. Yay. Okay, well, then call the roll, I guess, on this one.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Recommendations for future agendas? Do we have anything else from anybody right now? Okay. Seeing none, we move on to item number 11. Would you read that, please?
Convening into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction.
We will move into closed session and reconvene, but not come back to this.
We have to, to go call?
Yes. But I mean, that would be what the effect of it would be, right? Okay, so make a motion. Who's going to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Closed into closed session?